And welcome to the October 11, 2023 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. A meeting was held at 6 o'clock in the Chamber Councils of City Hall for clarification of the agenda. The following is the official agenda of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Discussion and commission action will be limited to those items on the agenda. Any citizen who wishes to address the commission shall first be recognized by the chair and shall give his or her name for the record. If a citizen wishes to read documentation of any sort to the commission, he or she shall first seek permission from the chair. There is a three-minute time limitation for public testimony to the commission. Agenda item number one is roll call. Ace, when you please call, roll.
Here and I have nothing to disclose.
Here and I have nothing to disclose.
Here and I have nothing to disclose.
Here, nothing to disclose.
Present and nothing to disclose.
Here with nothing to disclose.
Agenda item number two is approval of the minutes. The commission may wish to waive the oral reading of the planning and zoning clarification and meeting minutes held September 13, 2023. Is there any discussion from the commission on those minutes? With no further discussion, I would entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the minutes from the September 13, 2023 Planning and Zoning Commission as presented.
Second. Who seconded, sorry? I have a motion by Hewlett and a second by Phillips. Ace, when will you call vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. We will now move on to agenda item number three, public hearing, city-initiated text amendments to Title 17 zoning regulations. This time has been set aside for the commission to hear comments from the public regarding the city-initiated Title 17 zoning regulations text amendments. I would just, I'll go over those there. I will declare the public hearing open, and at this time, I would like to have staff come forward, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the commission. I'm Jim Anglesey, long-range planner for the city of Pocatello. Planning and Development Services staff is seeking the commission's recommendation on the proposed changes to Title 17 zoning regulations and prepare draft for the city council to consider. And I'm going to go over the summary that you've been provided in your packet of what changes we're proposing. Before I do that, we're going to address some concerns and some misinformation that's been circulating around in the community regarding short-term rentals. These proposals do not affect whether or not you can have a short-term rental in the city, and so I just want to get that out there. But I'll also go over kind of what, here you have state regulations on short-term rentals. It does allow for reasonable regulations by cities and counties to regulate them, and it also calls for them to be classified as residential land use. And currently, that's
Time hearing.
And currently, that's how we regulate short-term rentals, is they are residential land uses. And wherever a residential unit is permitted, a short-term rental would be permitted as And just for the public's information and your information, I've also included on this slide definition of household as well as dwelling unit. Again, when it comes down to it, a property owner has the ability to occupy or rent, whether short-term, long-term, or anything in between, of their property so long as a number of units and other dimensional standards such as setback, lot size requirements, et cetera, meet what is required in the zoning ordinance. And so those will vary between all the different zones on the requirements for lot size, the amount of units per lot. And so, as long as those are met, it can be rented or owned in any way. Because of this concern and this information that's been circulating, we have provided you an addendum for additional items to consider as amendments to Title 17 for clarification on short-term rentals. One of the things that we had noticed that may have been confusion is that it may have been seen that short-term rentals are, would be bed and breakfast, which they are not. Bed and breakfasts are more of a commercial use type and would not be considered a short-term rental or Airbnb or VRBO or any other business that you may go through. And so, we are proposing to add to these amendments definition for short-term rental, which is the rental or lease of any dwelling unit or portion therein for a period of not more than 30 days, and then gives us a citation to Idaho code. And then in the land use table, we are proposing to move bed and breakfast from residential uses, because it's not a residential use type, down to our commercial use types. And all of the use types in each zone are going to remain the same. And then we're proposing on adding short-term rentals, which will match that of any household unit or dwelling unit in the city, where they're permitted, where they have possible So, for the additional, what we're proposing in these amendments, we have, and I'll just go down the list for the sake of the public, in what we're looking to amend, you have these in your packet as well as the actual verbiage for code. In 1701130, consistency with the comprehensive plan, we propose to amend the plan designations and zoning districts permitted to align with comprehensive plan 2040. 1701150, definitions, amend the disturbed area definition to clarify what is considered natural versus disturbed slopes. Add definition for front building facade to clarify standards for building orientation, drive-throughs, and parking locations. Add definition for front yard area to clarify landscaping requirements. Add definition for premature alterations to clarify review items for the Historic Preservation Commission. Add definition for principal entrance to clarify building orientation. And then in 1701160, use classifications, amend shelter housing to include post-incarceration and halfway houses for individuals not under judicial detention. Amend classification for detention facilities. In 1701170, administrative provisions, amend language that determines what qualifies as a legal nonconforming lot. Amend language to include signage that qualifies as legal nonconforming structures. Remove the variance process as a means to expand a legal nonconforming structure and replace with conditional use permit process. Add standards for expanding, rebuilding, and repairing legal nonconforming structures. Remove variance application review criteria for legal nonconforming structures. Add language to clarify standards for repair and reconstruction of structures housing illegal nonconforming use. Remove criteria for nonconforming use expansion or change to meet the general criteria of the conditional use permit. Remove proportionate compliance and replace with required improvements. And add withholdings to address violations. In 1702120, comprehensive plan amendments, amend language to reference the most recently adopted comprehensive plan. In 1702130, conditional use permits, amend language to allow for two years to establish use instead of one year. Amend language to allow for one-year extension instead of six months. And remove 30-day requirement to request a variance extension. That should be a conditional use permit extension. In 1702160, variances, amend language to allow for two years to establish requested variances instead of one year. Amend language to allow for a one-year extension instead of six months. And remove the 30-day requirement to request a variance extension. In 1702300, decision-making procedures in public hearings, add provisions in hearing matrix and notification procedures to reflect proposed certificate of appropriateness process. 1702400, appeals, amend language to include the Historic Preservation Commission. 1703500, the use table, amend table to reflect the proper use of restricted uses and permitted uses. Allow colleges to be permitted outright in commercial zones and office park zones. Allow emergency services to be permitted outright in all zones. Allow religious institutions to be permitted outright in all commercial zones. Allow schools to be permitted outright in all commercial zones. Clarify community recreation use approval process in residential zones. In 1703600, dimensional standards table, remove redundant setback requirements. In 1704210, historic preservation overlay, add table outlining what items require a certificate of appropriateness as well as commission review, staff review, or requires no certificate of appropriateness. Amend application process to reflect proposed certificate of appropriateness process. Remove section outlining standards for review and reference the historic district design standards for review standards. Remove demolition procedures to reflect proposed certificate of appropriateness process. Add language requiring historic buildings to meet the provisions of the International Existing Building Code relating to the repair, alteration, relocation, and change of occupancy. In 1704220, original townsite overlay, amend setback requirements for non-residential uses to include a minimum of zero feet and a maximum of 10 feet. In addition to parking areas, require traffic circulation and drive-throughs to not be located between front building facade and the front lot line. Add language codifying street light standards as identified in the downtown development plan. 1705100, slope development standards, amend slope analysis to allow for previously disturbed slopes to be excluded from disturbance calculations. In 1705250, street frontage and setback area landscaping, amend minimum landscape requirements to be broken down into different residential development types. Amend language to ensure consistency. 1705610, residential development standards, add requirement for town home development landscaping. Amend off-street parking requirements for properties with alley access outside of the OTO. Amend section formatting. And finally, 1706400, home occupations, allow for retail sales and home occupations that meet all other standards. Now that you're asleep, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those at this time.
I'm just impressed you didn't like, get tongue-twisted like I have. So, one, I just want to commend the city for hearing the concerns that were coming in, and even though you realized that there was some false information out there, you still listened to those and made it clearer in these changes so that it's very clear what's going on. I really, I think everybody should appreciate that. I think I've summarized what everybody here wants to hear in a sentence. I just want you to say yes or no if I'm correct. So, short-term rental is an Airbnb, and they are allowed in all the same uses that household living is. So they're allowed in all residential zones. The only thing that has changed is that it's been added and clarified that you can still have your Airbnb in residential zones.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. With that, commission, any questions? He said a lot, I wanted to concise. About anything, not just that, about any of the changes. Yeah.
1705610, residential development standards for townhomes. I just noticed that we had struck a lot out of that. Was that because the previous standards were, you felt were too strict, or why did that undergo so much change?
So, under B2, where you see it struck out, that was actually replaced after three, and they were added as four, five, six, and seven.
And so they weren't struck out.
They were moved.
Modified.
Yep, they were moved.
Yep.
Yep.
Very good.
Because those would apply to single families, two families, and townhomes. And so not just the single family and two-family, but all residential landscaping.
Commission, any other questions? No? Okay, thank you. So, before we open, oh, one more question for you. Was there any other public comment since we received this?
None received.
Thank you. Before starting public testimony, I would like to remind, see, here I am stumbling, remind each person, when you come to the podium, state your name. Remember that you're to address the commission, not the audience or staff. You have three minutes to testify and will be asked to stop when time runs out. Keep questions and comments pertinent to the application. Do not duplicate questions, concerns, or comments covered by previous testimony heard today. So at this time, I would like to invite anybody providing testimony in support of the application to come forward.
I'll go. Go ahead.
Oh, I was going to ask for a point of clarification.
Yep. And if, and we may not bring staff up right now, but we'll write it down and then have them come answer it just to keep things moving.
They'll probably have an answer immediately. Point of clarification.
Name, please.
My name is Weston Dykman, for the record. In your statement, you were saying something about building and how you were going to require landscaping in the front yards. I'm a builder here in town. That's been brought up a lot by the inspectors, discussions with myself and the engineers. How is that going to be enforced going forward, would be my question.
What was you asking about front yard?
So, yeah, he was asking about landscaping. You're okay. I wrote it down just because I have a feeling, so he's not up and down. I wrote it down and we'll have him answer it. Anything else?
Done.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, my name's Zach Davis. I just wanted to, I think it'd be a good idea to really clarify between a short-term rental and a bed and breakfast, when you guys go ahead and start stating this, so that there's not some gray area, because I think some people may think of it as, well, I'm giving them a breakfast for, you know, just because, or anything. I was just thinking about that, to make sure it's like black and white, there's no gray area.
Okay. I think I know the answer, but just so I don't give out false information, I'll let him answer that.
No, I've seen that.
Okay, anything else you'd like?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you. So I just, this is in support of the application, just, okay.
My name is Julie Van Oostal. We have an Airbnb, and I don't know what you keep talking about 30 days or less rental. We have many long-term people that come and stay for us for months, so I don't know if that's a problem.
Nope. So, and I think that's part of the difference between an Airbnb and a bed and breakfast, that bed and breakfast is, there's not a 30-day limit on it.
Okay, thank you.
We can, we'll, okay. Anybody else supporting the application? No? At this, at, okay.
Hello, my name is Patricia Burke, and I'm asking for clarification on Airbnb in residential areas versus Airbnb in commercial areas.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can you state your name one more time, please?
Patricia Burke. Anybody else supporting the application? Anyone neutral or uncommitted to the application? Anyone opposing the application? Okay, at this time, I would like to ask staff to come back up, and I'll just go down the list with the questions. I think some of them will overlap, but
Sure.
Can you explain the change for the landscaping in front yards?
So, the landscaping in the front yards, as far as the amount, won't change, that we still require a 45% for the front yard area to be landscaped. The only thing we're changing for landscaping development standards is adding townhome structures and buildings to that requirement. And it states that for townhome structures and buildings, each end unit shall include a minimum of 45% landscaping in the front yard area. As far as enforcement goes, a lot of times, these are approved through the building permit review process. And then, as it's built, it's also checked at the certificate of occupancy stage before it's released to be lived in. If changes happen after that, that would be a code enforcement issue. A lot of times, our code enforcement's handled by complaint, but the city is attempting and trying to improve their code enforcement efforts to ensure compliance with the code.
Okay. So, the biggest change is that it's just being applied to townhomes as well as where before it was.
Sounds like just the end units in the townhomes.
End units in the town, in townhomes, yep. So if you have a row of townhomes, a lot of times, you get these weird landscaping areas that just turn into gravel in between the driveways of a townhome line. And so, we're not requiring landscaping in those middle units for that reason, because it ends up being these two to three, maybe five-foot landscape strips that don't make much sense. And so, we are, we're, we didn't have any landscape requirements for townhomes as written in the code. And a lot of times, we tried to attempt to apply the landscaping requirements through the single and two-family dwelling requirements, and it just wasn't working out. And so we wanted to codify how it would work in a townhome unit.
Okay. I will say, if, since the public testimony part of this is closed, if you have questions, just call staff. They will have no problem answering them for you. I called today before this meeting to make sure I understood everything clearly. Okay, thank you. The next question is, could you clarify the difference between a short-term rental and an Airbnb?
So, Airbnb is, Airbnb is a company name, and they're considered short-term rentals.
Thank you. We good, Zach? Does that make sense?
Between B, no, between bed and breakfast, not Airbnb.
You're right, I'm sorry. See, I wrote B and B, bed and breakfast.
Bed and breakfast.
Thank you for clarifying that those are the same. Next question. Could you clarify the difference between a short-term rental and a bed and breakfast? Thank you for keeping track of me.
So, as defined in our code, bed and breakfast facility is a dwelling in which the residents operate one to five overnight guest rooms for compensation on a daily basis. The only meal provided to customers is breakfast and only to customers lodging in the facility. The facility retains the appearance of a residential structure within its neighborhood. That's the definition of a bed and breakfast. And so, if you think about it, the traditional form of bed and breakfast, that's what that's getting to, is your traditional type of bed and breakfast, where you go in for a night, maybe two, yeah, and you can, and they serve you breakfast. And this was kind of, this predates the Airbnb model or short-term rental model. And so this
Can I clarify? So that definition hasn't changed? That definition's been there and nothing to do with any of these?
This definition's probably been here since the 80s.
Okay. Okay.
And then the short-term rental, just as I read, is the rental or lease of any dwelling unit or portion therein for a period of not more than 30 days. This was, we utilize other cities' definition of short-term rental. And so if the 30-day thing is an issue, that was the attempt to just kind of differentiate between a long-term rental and a short-term. Again, any residential unit can be rented for however long it wants to be, but this is the attempt of trying to differentiate between a long-term rental situation and rent a long-term lease.
Okay, so it's just the definition there. And so, if somebody rents a property for more than 30 days, then it becomes, by definition, a long-term rental unit. It's not prohibited, none of the other, nothing really affects it other than the definition.
Definition. And so, in that, in that case, the unit would be considered a long-term rental.
Considered a long-term rental, and it's still allowed.
And you can lease it, or, you know, have any type of contract that you want.
Okay.
But the 30 days just helps us differentiate between a long, long-term and a long, or short-term and long-term rental.
Brett McLean, Planning Director. Just to add to what Jim talked about, I want to go back to the bed and breakfast definition too. And one of the things that's different with a bed and breakfast is that they have a commercial kitchen, and they are serving food on a commercial basis.
Okay.
Now, if someone's doing an Airbnb and they're serving breakfast, that's at their risk, that if that individual gets sick, they can be high, highly liable for that illness or damage to that individual. But that is a specific difference between a bed and breakfast and what you might consider a short-term rental. The bed and breakfast is a commercial venture, it's not someone's home that they're renting. It's, it's an actual commercial enterprise with a commercial kitchen, and that's one of the distinctions between a bed and breakfast.
Thank you, that helps a lot.
The other thing I want to talk about is the 30-day, that cutoff.
Yep, that's the next question.
So, a short-term rental cuts off at 30 days, and that, that also goes back to building code. And there's different requirements when you're looking at building codes between long-term and short-term rental for different types of things. Now, state statute does allow for short-term rentals to be allowed in residential neighborhoods with any property that is a residential property, and we understand that, and we aren't regulating that, and I think it's been clear that I don't want to touch that. It's just a mess I don't want to get into. But, so if it's just a home, someone's renting their home out, they can rent it short-term or long-term. We don't get involved in that as a city. But when you're looking at commercial properties, that 30-day is a very defined line for building code issues where it's, if you have a long-term hotel versus a short-term hotel, they have very different standards of how they approach them, whether it's an apartment building or a hotel. Those are different things for fire suppression and other things that go along with that. So, that gets more into the commercial side of things. As far as short-term rentals, though, in residential zones, we just don't get involved in that. Don't have any plan to. It's a nightmare, so.
Clear? Okay. And then, can you explain for, and this is an Airbnb, right? Not a bed and breakfast, what's allowed in residential, and the difference between what's allowed in residential and commercial, please?
Yeah. So on the use table, we have it proposed as, under short-term rental, permitted outright in all residential zoning districts. In the commercial zones, CG and CC, you'll see an R6. That takes you to note six under the table, which talks about how residential uses are permitted outright so long as there's a commercial storefront attached to the building. So, for example, if you want upper-story housing or housing behind the storefront, you can do that so long as there's that commercial component. And then, R6 is also on the industrial zones. This takes you to the same note, and it talks about the historic warehouse district having those same abilities of upper-story housing with a storefront, some type of commercial use in the front.
So what you said is So what you've said is that it's permitted outright in residential. It's permitted in commercial just the same way other things are residential is permitted in commercial. You have to have a storefront, and it can be upstairs or behind this there. So give an example of, somebody throw out a store, Staples, sorry. There's a Staples, it's in a commercial building, in a commercial zone, but for some reason it has an upstairs apartment, you can rent it out as an Airbnb. That's when it's allowed in commercial zones. Sum it up? Okay. Okay?
Like the purpose building.
Yes, thank you. That was probably a better example. Small, locally-owned. It's closed, but I'm going to let you go, because I'm nice tonight. Because you guys are being nice tonight. Go ahead.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, but if you'll come to the microphone, or I'll just repeat it. Are we?
I can speak loudly.
Okay.
So if there is a home that was a home before it was owned commercial,
I was going to ask this.
And I have it, and I want to rent it out as an Airbnb, but if there's no commercial storefront, how does that affect my ability to do that?
I was wondering the same thing. Yeah, there's a couple on Yellowstone, like across from
So just, just so we make sure we have the question for the record. She's asking if there is a home, a residential home, used as that, that it was rezoned as commercial and it's still a residential home, but they want to rent it out as an Airbnb, can they do that?
Yes, that would be considered a legal non-conforming use or grandfathered use. And as long as it's
It's still kept as residential.
As long as it's still residential, a short-term rental is considered a residential use. And so it would be permitted outright as long as that use remains.
Nope, just her. No, I'm just kidding.
Basically, we can have an Airbnb anywhere. It doesn't matter about the zoning map. Am I correct?
Commer, if it's in a commercial zone, then it has to have a storefront.
Okay. But other than that. Or grandfathered in.
Correct, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, yep, as long as, as long as it's, a residential unit is permitted in that zone, they can have it. If it's grandfathered, they can have it.
Okay, thank you for that. With that, I will declare the public hearing closed. And entertain a motion.
I move to recommend approval of the proposed amendments to Title 17 zoning regulations, finding the amendments are in compliance with the Comprehensive Plan and the criteria listed in Section 17.02.170 of Public Pocatello City Code, including adding the addendum as presented this evening and authorize the chair to sign the findings of fact.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Hewlett and a second by Frye Aslan. Will you call? Vote.
Hewlett?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Or two?
Yes.
Chandler?
Yes.
Dyer?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Motion, Chair.
And with that, our public, our commission meeting is closed.